Good afternoon. I call to order this meeting of the Board of Education of Washington County. We have all members present and our student members also here with us this evening. So we do have a quorum. At this time, Vice President Stauffer is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time we'll have approval of tonight's or this afternoon's agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there any discussion?
Yes, is there any discussion? Madam President, I wish to amend the agenda under New Business to add an item number five, and it would be consideration of an appeal for item 01-19-R01.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there any discussion of the amendment? All right, the vote is on the amendment to this afternoon's agenda to add an item five under New Business, appeal number 01-19-R01. All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda? All right, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs. So we will now vote on the agenda as amended. All those in favor of the amended agenda? All right, seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. We now have an agenda that is amended. We'll vote one now for approval of the minutes.
President Williams?
I move for the approval of work session minutes dated Tuesday, May 21st, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections to the work session minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes of the work session? Three, four, five, five affirmative votes. Opposed?
Opposed, abstaining.
Okay, abstentions? Two abstentions. Thank you.
President Williams?
I move for the approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, May 21st, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes? All those in favor of approval of the closed session minutes? Okay, five affirmative. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions, and were you concurring with those? No, they were closed.
Closed, yeah.
You were just giving me a high sign. Thank you. Two abstentions. Okay.
President Williams?
I move for the approval of business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, May 21st, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes? Okay, the vote is on the business meeting minutes. All those in favor? Okay, six affirmative votes. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, and the student member concurs. And we'll move now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. As is customary this time, for Washington County, we've had great success with our athletic teams. We have Unified Track and Field. We recognize a team from Boonsborough High School, a team from Smithburg High School as well. We also have quite a few individual track winners we want to recognize, and we have a first for Washington County, three different schools where we have some state tennis champions. So we're excited to share those individuals with you. We're going to be recognizing them, and at this time I'd like to invite the board to go down front, and we'll receive our guests, and we'll take some pictures here in a few minutes.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to introduce some very good athletes that we have with us today. I recognize they're successful in the fields this spring. Want to explain, the first group that we're going to introduce is as a track teams for Unified for Boonsborough High School and Smithburg High School. They are, with Unified Sports, you can combine teams when there's not enough. So they were a combined team. Kind of is unusual for Boonsborough and Smithburg to get along. They're usually rivalries, but they combined to win the Division Four Championship this spring in Unified Sports. So we'd like to introduce first up the Boonsborough team that's here today, Caleb Bogley. Andrew Himes.
Congratulations.
And we have the coaches with us today. Head coach Wendy Strunk. Assisted by Zoe Harris. And then the second half of that team is from Smithburg High School. We have with us today Michael Douglas. And Kayden Smith. And then with us today is their head coach, Dan Rickett. And assisted by Mary Barnhart. And again, this was a combined team to win a Division Four Unified State Championship this year for track and field.
Take one step over. Perfect. You're good right there. There you go. Andrew, you're my main man front and center.
Can you see the top?
You want to look down straight at the photo, okay? I have people out there. I have two.
Great.
Squeeze in real tight.
Yep, everyone get in real close.
On three. One, two, three. Take another one for you. And one, two, three. One for good luck, okay? There was me here. All right, you have one more. One, two, three. Good smile. All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, next up we have individual track champions from this past spring track event. Very successful. A number of our athletes are not here because they're at graduation practice and so on and so forth, but we do have some with us today. Starting off today from Boonsborough High School, these are all Boonsborough High School athletes at this moment. We're going to start with the girls, four-by-800-meter relay team. They were the 1A champions with a time of, get it here, nine minutes and fifty-nine, excuse, nine fifty-nine, is that all right? Yeah, nine fifty-nine point fourteen. So congratulations to them. Members of that team are Samantha Augustini. Boonsborough also, and the boys, 1A, had the four-by-800-meter relay championship team. They had a time of eight minutes, fourteen seconds for them. That team consisted of Joseph Brennan, who is not here with us today, Tyson Bellistri is not here as well. With us today from that team though is Andrew Simonson. Okay, and I'm going to introduce Donovan in a second because Donovan has more than one, who is also part of this team. The sixteen-hundred-meter champion, that's the mile, with a time of four minutes and Okay, and our next athlete from Boonsborough, as I said, he was also part of that four-by-800-meter relay team that was champion. He was also the sixteen-hundred-meter run champion, Donovan McClellan. All right, it's eight-hundred-meter run, I'm sorry. Okay, North Hagerstown, North Hagerstown athletes, we had competed in the 3A division, and we had the four-by-200-meter relay team that won from North Hagerstown in the boys, at the winning time of one minute, twenty-eight seconds. On that team, we have with us today Travis Banfo. All right, Alex Tima Abanke. And we had some individuals with North High as well. The 3A discus champion with a throw of one hundred fifty-two feet, three inches, Christopher Travinger. And on the girls' side, from North Hagerstown, in the 3A pole vault champion with a clearing of height of ten feet, six inches, Clara De Clu. And jumping back down to 1A, we had on the boys' side, a long jump champion from Smithburg High School, jumping twenty-one feet, five inches, Ryan Chen. And that is all our track and field champions for this year.
On three. One, two, three.
And we do have our Boonsborough track coaches and our Smithburg track coaches back here supporting today as well. They're always with those guys. And this year in tennis, the state changed the way we did tennis. Tennis has always been done with really one champion for one divi-, you have basically a singles champion, doubles champion, so it was the best in the state. This year we went to classifications like other sports. So kind of a historic year for tennis. We had three doubles teams in Washington County, win state championships this year. We have two of those teams here with us. I think it's the first time since 1991 we've had a champion in tennis in Washington County. So again, very historic. So congratulations to these athletes. So first up, we had the 1A doubles champion from Clear Spring High School, Madison Jenkins. And then in the 3A, from South Hagerstown High School, this was a mixed doubles team. We have Ally Frushhour. And we also had a boys' double team from Boonsborough High School, Evan Rao and Ian As we said, we have some, our coaching staff from South Hagerstown is here, as well as our coaching staff from Clear Spring High School to support these kids.
That concludes my comments for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. At this time we move to public comment. I have no one who's signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience this afternoon who would like to come forward? Okay. We'll move to our first item under Old Business, the second reading of proposed changes to policy GCBA, incentive salary required program planning. Mr. Trotta?
On May the 21st, the Board of Education approved the first reading of the proposed changes to policy GCBA. We have not received any comments from the community with regard to the proposed changes. The Policy Committee is requesting the approval of the second reading of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy GCBA, which is entitled Incentive Salary Required Program Planning.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gester. Any questions or any discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy GCBA entitled Incentive Salary Required Program Planning. All those in favor? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
Item number two is second reading of proposed changes to policy BDF, Advisory Committees to the Board of Education, and proposed changes to exhibits. Mr. Trotta?
Thank you. On May the 21st, the Board of Education approved the first reading of the proposed changes to policy BDF, and there are nine separate and distinct exhibits to that particular policy that addresses each of the advisory committees to the Board of Education. We have not received any comments from the community with regard to the proposed changes. The Policy Committee is requesting the approval of this policy and also of the nine exhibits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I will present two motions. The first, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy BDF entitled Advisory Committees to the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Any discussions, any questions? Okay, then our vote is on approval of the second reading of proposed changes to policy BDF entitled Advisory Committees to the Board of Education. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs.
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to exhibits BDF E1 entitled Budget Advocacy and Review Advisory Committee, BDF E2 Calendar Advisory Committee, BDF E3 County Citizens Advisory Council, BDF E4 District Technology Planning and Advisory Committee, BDF E5 Ethics Advisory Panel, and BDF E6 Facilities and Enrollment Advisory Committee, and finally, BDF E7 entitled Family Life, I'm sorry, I missed the other two, Advisory Life Committee. BDF E8 Finance and Audit Review Advisory Committee, and BDF E9 entitled Safe Schools Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions or any discussion? Okay, the vote is to approve the second reading of proposed changes to the exhibits as read by Mrs. Fisher. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to New Business. First item of New Business is consideration of the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association for the 2019-2020
Good afternoon, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. We're happy to be here today because we're here for consideration of a contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association for the 2019-2020 school year. So we're here today requesting your approval of this proposed contract agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions or any discussion? Okay, the vote is to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association for 2019-2020 school year. All those in favor? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Good evening, Mr. Becker. I keep saying good evening because that's what I'm accustomed to. It's nice to have you with us. And from our perspective, negotiations went well, and I'm pleased that we were able to come to an agreement, especially in the area of salary.
Yes, and I'm hopeful that can continue with all the units because the teachers association does stand in support of the state collective bargaining law. of the state collective bargaining law, which provides for bargaining salary, workday, hours worked, work year. All educators in every unit devote themselves to their students and their schools, and they're dedicated employees of Washington County Public Schools, and our students benefit from the quality workforce. Remember, our employees' working conditions are the students' learning conditions, and I'm hopeful that we'll work to a amicable resolution for all the units.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next item under New Business is this afternoon's consent agenda. Mr. Baker?
Good afternoon, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Today, I have ten items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for frontline education software modules from Frontline Education at a total cost of $130,185.84. Annual maintenance of print center equipments to Canon Solutions America, Inc. at a cost of $146,435.60. Unit price contract for nursing and special education service providers, renewal to various vendors at the unit prices listed. Professional school auditing services to Ronald Schiffler at the hourly rates listed. Milk to Gallagher Dairy Company at a yearly estimated annual amount of $410,890.20. K-12 food products and distribution to Premier, Inc. at a yearly estimated annual amount of $2,682,687.8. Athletic trainer services to Pivot Athletic Training at a cost of $297,500. Microsoft licenses renewal to Bell Tech Logics at a cost of $495,061.67. A la carte snacks and beverages to Culinary Ventures Maryland at the unit prices listed. And relocation of three portable classroom buildings to Salem Avenue Elementary to Milton Stamper Builders at a cost of $328,000.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second to Mr. Bigford's motion?
Second.
Mr. Gessford, any questions or any discussion? No, then the motion is on Mr. Bigford's motion for approval of the consent agenda as read. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is the 2019 Educational Facilities Master Plan. Mr. Prue. Mr. Mills. Mr. Roll- oh, no, Mr. Mills, I'm sorry. Mr. Rollins. Mr. Criswell.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Your last scheduled meeting date on May 21st. Staff presented to you the Educational Facilities Master Plan for 2019, which is due to be sent to the state on or before July 1. And at this point, we are seeking your approval on that plan, and staff is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Madam Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the 2019 Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions for the team or any discussion? Nothing.
I just want to make a comment. I mean, why, shouldn't we let people know why we want to consolidate schools? I mean, I think we've talked about it before, but, you know, we've got three, six schools here. We're consolidating into three, and can you explain why we've decided to do that?
Right, well, there were many reasons cited why we wanted to do that. One, it lowers the construction cost. It lowers, lowers operating costs. So it's really, we think it's the fiscally responsible reason to do that. It also eliminates most of our inventory of open elementary schools. So it adds security for the students who will go there. It eliminates three schools that are on well and septic, not on public utilities. So there's a myriad of reasons why we wanted to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, our vote is on approval of the 2019 Educational Facilities Master Plan. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item under consideration is the State Fiscal Year 2020 Local Application for Federal Funds. Good afternoon, Dr. Gladhill.
Good afternoon. We're here to ask your approval of the Fiscal Year 2020 Local Application for Federal Funds and Staffing Plan. As you can see in your handouts, we've had an increase of about 102 students, about $130,000 this year, which proportionally is about a $36.50 decrease in funding per student when you look at the number of students and funding from Fiscal Year 19 to Fiscal Year 2020. So breaking the grant down, we have about 91% of the grant that goes towards staffing, 5% to materials, and 4% to business support. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions you might have and request your approval of the Fiscal Year 2020 Local Application for Federal Funds and Staffing Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Gladhill. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the SFY 20 Local Application for Federal Funds.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Dr. Gladhill? Any discussion? I think our vote is on approval of the SFY 20 Local Application for Federal Funds. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Gladhill.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number five, which is a boundary alignment appeal. I'd like to read some background. On May 21st, 2019, the Washington County Board of Education conducted its regularly scheduled public business meeting. On that date, the Board of Education approved a motion regarding boundary realignment recommendation number one. Administrative Regulations Regulation JCA-R permits an interested parent or guardian to note an appeal in writing within five business days of the date of the Board of Education's decision. The Board of Education received an appeal on June 3rd, 2019, with regard to its decision concerning boundary realignment recommendation number one. The appeal has been assigned Appeal Number 01-19-R01. Each Board of Education member has been provided a copy of the appeal. Please note that in the course of the Board of Education's deliberations regarding all of the proposed boundary realignments, consideration was given to the FIACS Report and Recommendations, the Superintendent's Report and Recommendations, the emails, letters, and documents that have been provided by members of the public and staff, and other documents that are part of the official record, and the comments offered by citizens during the Board of Education's meetings and the public hearing conducted on April 16th, 2019. Entertained motion for, for the appeal?
I move to deny Appeal Number 01-19-R01.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussions, any discussion or any questions about the appeal? Okay, our vote is to deny Appeal Number 01-19-R01. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes. Student member abstains. Oh, you're abstaining? Thank you. Student member abstains. Motion carries. The appeal is denied. That brings us now to the Superintendent's Update.
All right, just a few comments this evening. First of all, we want to wish all of our seniors a happy graduation. We've already started through that process last week. And last night, we were at the Maryland Theater with Smithburg High School. And tonight, we begin with several more and throughout the week until Friday, when we conclude our graduation ceremonies. So we wish our seniors the very, very best of luck in their future. We hope we've well prepared you. To our underclassmen, we still have a little bit more than a week to go. So we want you to continue to attend school. Next week, I think there are quite a few celebrations for our underclassmen, all the way down into elementary schools. So continue to attend school and, and continue the learning experience, and we'll celebrate your success as well. To our ESP staff, our teaching staff, our administrative staff, I just can't thank you enough for another successful year. What I've witnessed is a lot of hard work from all of our staff members to help make our students successful. We appreciate the support from the community, the students, and again, as well as our staff. So we're not quite out yet. Again, to our seniors, wish you well. But by the time we have our next meeting, we'll be on to next year, and the year will have closed out. So I hope everyone has a great summer. We look forward to seeing our underclassmen and teachers and everybody back next year. And that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Action. Dr. Bishop?
Good afternoon, President Williams, Dr. Michael, elective board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review this afternoon. And at this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
Sir Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. So we're voting to approve the personnel decisions made in closed session earlier this afternoon. All those in favor? All right, we have seven affirmative votes. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Reports to the board. Board Member Committee reports. Mr. Mackley, would you like to begin down there?
Last Wednesday, the Washington County Association of Student Councils met here at CES, and we elected our new executive board for next year. So we'll be getting started this summer, and have lots in store for next year. That's all.
Mrs. Murray. Curriculum and Instruction did not meet this month because I was ill, but we will be meeting Tuesday, June 25th, 4:00 p.m. in the Board of Ed Conference Room.
Thank you.
You to report?
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
The employees have not met, but plans to take the month of Ju- June off, and we'll be back in July.
Mr. Fisher?
Policy Committee met on May the 30th and reviewed the two policies that passed on second vote earlier this afternoon. We will be meeting again on June the 11th to continue taking up policy JICI, which is a policy that deals with personally-owned electronic devices in school. We have been working on that policy for the last couple of meetings and hope to get it ready at our next meeting for presentation to the full board.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, ma'am. We will be meeting August 27th at 9:15, and when we will get a real good picture of all our personnel moves during the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. All right, we'll move to miscellaneous business, future agenda items. You have a future agenda item list, I believe, included in your packet. That includes some things coming up in June, on the 18th. We have a construction update on the urban improvement project and the new Sharpsburg Elementary School, and a career technology education update as well. If you have suggestions for agenda items, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know, and we'll do what we can to get those on an agenda for an upcoming meeting. So we'll move to Board Member Comments. Mr. Ridenhour, would you like to begin?
I'll be first on.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Um, just that I did attend the family center graduation last week. It's a very different kind of ceremony from our typical graduations at most of the high schools, based on the fact that there are such a few number of students that graduate. This year, there were 26, I believe. That allows for a more informal atmosphere, more personal, personal events, and each graduate has an opportunity, if they want to take it, to get up and speak, not just a single speaker. But it was very enjoyable. I congratulate not only those graduates, but all the graduates from WCPS schools this year. Great success to all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, the only thing that I have for tonight is, I'm just going to ask for courtesy here of maybe possibly a review of the policy, dress code policy for the future Policy Committee, and just an overall review for student and employees.
Mrs. Fisher, have you made that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mr. Stauffer?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend the graduation exercises of Antietam Academy and Evening High School. And I'll just say this, there are many success stories at that school for those who criticize the public schools and what they do. Many, many success stories out there of kids who would not have graduated and would have been dropouts.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer? Mr. Bigford?
I would like to thank the Barbara Ingram School as well as the foundation for scheduling the weekend of events for alumni of the school to mark the 10th anniversary, which is hard to believe, of Barbara Ingram. They put on a performance Saturday night that my wife and I attended, and it was really gratifying to see how each program has improved and grown, and also to see many former students in just the school's short history that came back, some from New York City, some from farther than that, to perform on stage and take part in the weekend's festivities. I think that says a lot about why we opened that school and the treasure that it is in the city and county. And it was just a really nice performance, and I wanted to call attention to that.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Mrs. Murray?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the two Salem Avenue students who were recognized by the mayor and council on Tuesday, May 28th, for their essays in the If I Were Mayor writing contest. So it was very nice of them to be honored, and their teacher, Mr. Craig Iker, also.
I have nothing.
I had the opportunity last evening to attend and to participate in the commencement service for Smithburg High School. And it was at the historic Maryland Theater. What a great, great-looking group of students. Some of them headed to college. Some of them headed to serve in our armed forces. Some of them headed to trade school. It's, it's always a great thing to see our youth looking their best. And I'd like to thank Principal Gary Willow for the kindness and the accommodations he made for me to allow me to be able to participate comfortably. So it was a great evening last evening. And I'm very grateful to have been able to participate.
Did you make it through the speech?
I did make it through the speech. There was some question as to whether or not I would be able to make it through the speech, keeping my composure. And I think I was able to do that successfully. Would you witness to that, Dr. Michael? Okay, thank you. I just have one other comment. There was an article in today's Herald Mail regarding- There was an article in today's Herald Mail regarding our negotiated agreement signed this evening with WCTA, and I would just like to echo the words of our superintendent. Recruiting and retaining the highest-quality teachers is of great concern to this board. We all want the very best available for our children in Washington County, and the increase in beginning salary and the salary increase for all teachers will mean that our system can be competitive with those counties surrounding us. We're only able to do this through this new teacher incentive grant made possible by Senate Bill 1030, and our ability to work collaboratively with the Washington County Teachers Association. So very pleased that we're able to give this kind of raise to our teachers. It means a lot for us. And those are my comments for this evening. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.